So I'd like to call a meeting of the U-46 Board. Its time is 7:05 on Monday, the 17th of February. Happy President's Day to all. I have to admit for RETN viewers of this, I've been told in the past if you're going to be on video or television, don't wear a striped shirt because it causes issues on the TV screen, but I kind of forgot that this morning when I put my shirt on. So if this shows up funky on the video, I apologize in advance. So I'd like to start out by reading the mission statements. Essex High School is a mission-driven and learning-centered community that believes through both independent and collaborative engagement, everyone can develop excellence in their individual pursuits. We offer a rigorous and varied curriculum and believe in challenging students to think critically and act responsibly, compassionately, and respectfully. We foster intellectual curiosity and resourcefulness so that students can engage in their learning to achieve the behaviors, skills, and knowledge essential to becoming a contributing members of their community and citizens of a diverse and ever-changing world. Our mission statement for the Center for Technology Essex provides comprehensive technical programs for all students which include career exploration, preparation, and technical literacy in a respectful learning environment. Students will have the opportunity to acquire skills necessary to reach their individual goals. Let's go around the table. Director Travers will start at your end.
Dr. Travers after the Technology Essex.
You're a Knox Board Member from Essex Junction.
Alvin Barrier, Board Member.
Grant Geisler, CFO.
Jack Balindorf, a Board Member from Essex Junction and Chairman.
Deidre Denova, Superintendent.
I'm Brian Donio, a Board Member from Essex Junction.
Brian McLaren, Board Member from Essex Town.
Robert Irvin, Principal Essex High School.
Gary Baker, Board Member Essex Town.
All right. Thank you. Our first item on our agenda this evening is motorcycle driver education. That topic has been previously addressed in earlier meetings. Recall that, well, actually Superintendent Denova, maybe you can pick it up from here?
It's on the agenda again because we received a letter from Julianne Long, who is interested in appealing the decision of the Board regarding motorcycle driver ed class. She again brought to your attention the ways in which they modified the program with a later start time, even later than what we had originally thought. It's between 9:30 and 10:00. I think originally when we heard from our neighbors, they were talking about an 8:30, that they had postponed it until 8:30. So it's a little later, but that's about the only thing that's different than the information you've already received regarding the program. You made a decision on this based on a concern brought to you by a neighbor, and the owner and trainer of this program is appealing that decision with the letter attached in your org notes.
So is there any, any specific actions that we need to do this evening? Those org notes, it's, it's right listed there, Ms. Long Ignizewski's letter. Do we, do we want to entertain this? Is there some, is there an action required this evening on this? Because there's not one identified in the agenda.
There isn't, if there is an action that the Board would like to take or a direction different than your current decision.
Okay.
I think it's time to discuss that. Hoping that the owner would be here tonight to discuss the appeal, but I'm certain about the time and whatnot.
Okay.
I hope to later.
So we've, you know, we've addressed this in the Board Business in earlier matters. The Board has made a decision. We've got an appeal. Just looking for the Board's input. Do we want to reconsider our position? Or do we affirm our position that we gave before and provide direction back to the administration to, any sense as to?
I think we pretty much have made a decision for now.
Okay.
I agree. I'm not interested in rehearing it.
Right. Is there, is there any interest in reconsidering our position? Seeing no Board Member is interested in reconsidering, I would demand this back to the Administration for final disposition with the Board's position as it was when we, from our final discussion point on this, and that we would not be hosting that motorcycle training course on our school property. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is Grant Geisler, our Chief Financial Officer, to present our FY15 budget. Grant has a presentation to take us through this evening, and so, Grant, floor is yours.
All right. Well, this briefing, as you all know, represents the culmination of four budget work sessions and includes information related to the Essex High School budget, which includes the general fund and capital plan, as well as the Center for Technology Essex general fund budget. Before I get into the actual budgets, I just wanted to briefly discuss some state law changes that impact the way we portray the budgets. Special education must now be provided and the costs have to be booked at the SU level. That means the specific special education lines within the high school have decreased, but they are replaced by one line for a special education assessment. Financial audits must also be provided and the costs booked at the SU level, which means there is no audit cost for the high school or tech center, and instead that cost is shifted to the SU assessment, so there's a minor increase in the SU assessment relative to that. The excess spending threshold has been reduced from 125% of the prior year statewide average spending per pupil down to 123%. That has the potential of having a very serious impact to tax rates, but fortunately, the high school remains below that threshold, so it wasn't a problem for us. Lastly, the two-vote provision has expired, so we can return to the traditional language in the budget articles. And then we're going to just take a quick look at the budgets at a glance. The high school general fund budget is $24,013,948. That's the amount that will show up in the budget article. We started with an increase of over $1.1 million, or 4.9% increase in the expense budget, and we're able to shave that down to a 4.2% increase. Education spending is up about 4.4%, but if you go back and look at FY11, it's about 2.1% per year increase. So you're looking at basically an inflationary increase since FY11. And we don't just randomly pick FY11. That's the year before we went through the challenge for change, where your district was one of the few that made the reduction target, and you shaved a lot of the flexibility out of your budget at that point. Other districts may not have made that, so we, we have a little less flexibility ever since then. So 2.1% per year increase in education spending since FY11. Education spending per pupil, the excess spending threshold is $16,166, and we're sitting now at $15,365, about $800 lower than the excess spending threshold. The base education amount is highlighted at $9,382 because that has to be set by law, but we believe that's the amount that will be set. The capital plan is limited to 1% of the general fund budget, so that's factored into the top chart. You can see the capital plan budget is added in already. The CTE budget is only increasing 0.3% to $8,485,977. Unfortunately, the six semester average is down a little bit, about 11 pupils. Because of that and the loss of some revenue, the tuition is up $600, or 3.8%, which is roughly the estimate for how much education spending is going to go up statewide. The Board's guidance is similar to prior years. We want to maintain the high level of educational quality, support the school action plans, and be sensitive to the burden on taxpayers. For the high school, that means trying to focus on keeping that education spending amount low as possible, and for CTE, it's trying to keep the tuition as low as possible. So we'll start with the general fund budget for the high school. As the Board started its deliberations, there were several things to keep in mind. On the challenges side, the projected base tax rate increase of seven cents was obviously looming large. That's the largest increase I've seen. Last year it was a four cent increase. Seven cents is extremely large. We still have a decreasing equalized pupil count, which also has negative tax implications. Our fund balance decreased by $175,000. As you build tighter budgets, you have less surplus to roll forward, and that's what we're dealing with. Non-personnel special education costs are up $292,000. For health insurance, the rate is up 4.5%, which is much better than this year, which was 9.5%, but still it's an extreme challenge whenever about 12% of your budget is going up 4.5%. And you can't really do much about that. Although the tech center's six semester average is decreasing, the number of kids from the, from Essex High School going to the tech centers are increasing. So we have an increased six semester average and higher tech tuition, which means the expense related to tech tuition is up. Luckily, there are some favorable conditions. First off, we have more special education reimbursement coming in, which helps to partially offset the personnel and the non-personnel costs. We have many staffing adjustments, but overall, there's a decrease in staffing and costs. The early departure incentive that was offered about three or four years ago has been paid off, so there's a reduction in cost. Long-term debt is lower, and utility costs are a little lower. So looking at some achievements to celebrate for the high school, there's a lot on these next two slides. I'm not going to read them all, but this briefing will be posted on the Board's website tomorrow, so people can look at it in detail. But just a few bullets to highlight, we do have increased student enrollment in online courses, and the last time there was a, a data collection on the percentage of students who enroll in college after graduation. Essex High School was far and away the number one in the state. Looking at the next slide, our science kneecap scores were the second highest in the state this past year. And Essex High School was selected as a pilot school for the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium testing. There's some impressive data for advanced placement that you can see. And then under kind of competitions, but not all of them are competitions, all three of Vermont's AP Scholars are Essex High School students, which is very impressive. Our Scholars Bowl team, there's actually an update to the bullet that's on this slide. They just won their first round competition, and they had an all-time record score for points, points scored. So very impressive, and we'll have to keep our eye on them as they progress. Looking at educational quality, you can see that over time, our most recent scores have shown improvement in all areas, reading, math, writing, and science. Since we have been selected as an S-Back testing site, we won't be seeing any updates for reading, math, or writing. Those will not be updated as we begin taking the S-Back, but we should continue to get science results. And then looking at the state, county, and school performance, the first thing to realize is that Vermont does very well compared to other states, so there's already kind of a high watermark. Typically, Chittenden County does well within the state, so there's another higher watermark. It's impressive to note that in every category, though, Essex High School has outperformed even the Chittenden County average. For enrollment, enrollment this year was projected at 1268. We ended up with 1,272. We did have, in one area, less students than we anticipated, and that's tuition students. We had 13 less than we thought we were going to get, but overall, we finished with about four more than we anticipated. The FY15 projection shows a drop of about 38 students. Tuition students decline until we level out in the mid-160s, but that, as you know, would be probably much worse if it wasn't for the fact that we have a couple of buses going up to the islands in Georgia. Essex Town has some ups and downs in the next few years, and then settle in at about 560. Essex Junction drops next year, and then we have some increases until we hit about 530. So overall, there's a few ups and downs in the near term, but overall, we should settle in at about 1,240 to 1,250, which isn't that much below where we are now. This pie chart just shows where the revenues come from. About 84% of the money comes in the way of state grants, about 16% in the way of local revenues, and most of that is local tuition from sending schools. And then, you know, federal revenues, all we have left now is just Air Force Junior ROTC salary assistance, and then we have a bond of feesance for, I think, back whenever we did some roof work. But by, by far, it's state with local revenues, and federal and other don't really amount to much. And then looking at significant revenue changes, the fund balance is down 175. You know, we're fortunate to have any kind of a surplus to roll forward, of course, but as I mentioned, as we build tighter budgets, we have less surplus that's, that's rolling forward, so that we have a decrease there. Regular education tuition is down about $139,000. I mentioned that we had less tuition students this year, and then we anticipate a few less next year. We've increased the tuition rate to try to reduce that impact, but we're still going to see a decrease. Special ed reimbursement from sending schools, we actually believe we're going to see an increase there of about $146,000, because we're anticipating that we'll provide more services to tuition students, and of course, we'll get reimbursement for that beyond just the regular education tuition. The education spending grant is increasing. That's really the amount that's required in order to balance revenues with expenses. State special education reimbursement is going to go up about $342,000. That's aligned with higher costs, as I mentioned earlier, and those higher costs are largely driven by the need for outside placements. And since some of those placements are considered extraordinary, meaning over $50,000, then we get a higher rate of reimbursement. Tech center on-behalf tuition is up about $52,000. As I mentioned, Essex High School has a higher percentage of students going to tech center. State transportation aid is up about $46,000. That's based on allowable costs, and now we can claim the cost for those buses that go up to the islands in Georgia. So it's kind of paying two dividends. We get a higher transportation grant, and we get more tuition students. And then all other categories combined lead to about a $12,000 increase in revenues. On the investment side, salaries and benefits make up about 72% of the budget. And then tech tuition and the assessments for special ed and SU make up about 15%, so they're, you're at about 87% of the budget. There's many other smaller line items, utilities, transportation, and such, until you're left with about 4.3% that goes towards supplies, equipment, testing, materials, travel, everything else, which 4% isn't a whole lot of the budget left over for those requirements. And then looking at, let's skip a slide. Here we go. There's a bar chart that just shows the investment changes from FY14 to FY15. Salaries increasing about 2.9%, and that includes the impact of the staffing adjustments, which I'll show in a moment. Benefits are up about 5% or so, mostly because of the health rate increase. Tech tuition is up, as I mentioned, about $120,000 because we have more students, a higher rate. Special ed tuition and professional services is down, but the special ed assessment is taking its place. So really, if we weren't having to change how we portrayed special ed, you would just see one bar, and it would be an increase of about $292,000. You can see the rest are pretty small in comparison. We'll look at the individual lines a little bit more here. Salaries and benefits, obviously, since salaries and benefits make up over 70% of the budget, we look at that pretty thoroughly every year. We analyze enrollment projections, class size standards, and registration history to see what the requirements are. As I mentioned, the salary increase is 2.9%, the benefit increase is about 5.1%. The fact that we get higher special ed reimbursement helps to offset some of this increase because some of the salary and benefits here relate to special ed employees. As far as non-personnel special education costs are concerned, the increase is $292,000 overall, and that's based on student need and driven by higher outside placement costs. And once again, a higher special ed reimbursement helps to offset some of that expense. Tech tuition is up $120,000. That's separated between what we get from the state as an on-behalf payment and what the actual checks that we write from the district. The number of, of kids that we're seeing as an increase is about 4.7, and the tuition rate has increased as well. The SU assessment is up about $57,000, but that does include the cost of financial audits that got rolled into there, and also includes the fact that a large portion of the Catamount health cost got shifted from the district to the SU because all substitute employees are now considered SU employees. So without those impacts, we'd really be looking at about a $31,000 increase, or 2.5%. Utilities is down about $21,000, thanks to lower natural gas rates. Just to kind of sidetrack for a moment, you probably heard a couple of weeks ago, I don't even know if it's been two weeks, there was an explosion in Canada. So just for your information, temporarily, we're burning oil instead of natural gas because we were asked to interrupt that service so that they could concentrate usage in other areas. So we are burning oil, more oil than we burned for several years. But this is a temporary issue, so it doesn't really impact the FY15 budget. I've been assured that it shouldn't impact rates long-term. Debt service is down about $25,000 as interest rates, or not interest rates, but the interest amount that we pay each year drops off. And then other categories combined are a decrease of about $25,000. One line item that makes up a big chunk of that is that we had paid contracted services for internship work. That was about $20,000 of contracted services that came off and got shifted because we have a staffing increase that I'll talk about in a second. Actually, I'll talk about it right now. Yeah, here's the slide. The Coordinator of Career Development is the largest increase, but we are utilizing .2 of a position that had been shared with CTE, and we're also reducing contracted services by that 20,000 that I just mentioned. The position coordinates internships, increases community connections around pathways for careers and life skills, and then also acts as a career curriculum coach for other teachers. From the next line down that says new health, down to reduction for world language, all of those are adjustments based on staffing analysis, looking at enrollment projections, registration history, and class size standards. Those items combined net to a decrease of about $127,000. The last line, security, that's for greeters at both main entrances, and basically, we can do that by converting a part-time position to a full-time position. Rob and Bob will tell you that we're already doing this right now, but it does take away from somebody who could be walking around, monitoring within the building and within the parking lots. It's something we can kind of get away with now because with this weather, there isn't much activity in the parking lots, but it'll be a challenge that we're going to work through the rest of this year, but we definitely would like to bump this by a .5 so that we have a little extra flexibility in having somebody to be able to monitor various locations. Special education assessment, the top chart just shows the amount that has been shifted from district to the special ed assessment. So the outside placement costs are no longer in the district, they're in the SU. The second chart shows the amount that's remaining within the district. Some of the requirements are still just mostly like supply, some supply costs are still in the district. And then you can see the total requirement going from 800 to $1,902. So the increase is $292,000, and it shows up as a decrease in the district's special education budget of about $746,000, and then an increase, or the initiation of the special education assessment, of just over a million. And then we get into the fund calculations, the homestead or property tax rate calculations for ninth through 12th grade. That smaller top chart just shows how we calculate the district's spending adjustment. The bottom chart shows the real calculation for the tax rate. We start with the base tax rate of $1, which as I mentioned is up seven cents. You multiply that by the district's spending adjustment percentage, then you multiply that by the percentage of kids in the community that are in ninth through 12th grade. The last thing you do is you divide it by the common level of appraisal, and what you're left with in Essex Junction is a tax rate of about 54.5 cents, and for Essex Town, it's 56.2 cents. And the note at the bottom just shows that, you know, we are assuming a seven cent increase in the base rate and a base education amount of 93.82. Those have to be set by law, so that could change, but most districts are using that as their assumption. For income sensitivity, you take the base rate of 1.84%, which is up .04%, and you multiply that by the spending adjustment and the percentage of kids that are in ninth through 12th grade. You get 1% for Essex Junction, 1.03% for Essex Town. And then to show how that compares with this year's rates, in Essex Junction, the property tax rate is going up about 4.5 cents. That's $45 for $100,000 in property. Income sensitivity is going up .03%, which would be 15 cent, a $15 increase if you had household income of $50,000 and paid only based on salary. The numbers are pretty similar in Essex Town. Instead of 4.5 cents, it's 4.56 cents. The income sensitivity is going up the same percentage. As you all know, that since most people pay their education taxes based on a combination of income and property, in order to really get a good estimate on what your tax is, you need to look at those town meeting tax grids, which are not available yet, but they will be available at the informational hearing, and hopefully, we'll have them in time to include in the annual report.
Do we have reasonable expectations that's going to occur? We'll have them in time to be included in our report?
It's, it's always very close. And to be honest, we're one of the late ones because of having an April vote. So I haven't submitted our preliminary budget yet, so they can't even think about running those until they get all of the inputs, which, provided you approve the budget tonight, I will input, I will provide the preliminary budget input tomorrow.
Okay.
And hopefully, we will get it. It'll be, it'll be close, but we'll see if we can, we can get it.
All right. Thank you.
To summarize the high school general fund, the expense budget, the increase is a little misleading because the, part of that is based on special education costs going up, but we also have higher reimbursement. So that's why I say it's a little misleading. The budget increase is 4.2%. The education sp- The education spending increase is four point four percent. We did try to reduce education spending as much as possible without impacting quality. If you look at where we were without the decrease in fund balance or tuition revenue, then we would only be looking at an increase in education spending of two point six percent instead of four point four. And once again, not meaning to, not meaning to, you know, beat a horse, but the increase since FY eleven is only two point one percent per year, even factoring in this year's increase of four point four, which was higher than normal. Just some thoughts on the tax rate increase, you know, forty-five dollars for a hundred thousand dollars in property. Without that seven cent base rate increase, it would be seven dollars instead of forty-five. And if we weren't dealing with the drop in equalized pupils, which most districts are, that would actually be no increase at all. So we're going to move on to the capital plan, which, as I mentioned, is limited to one percent of the general fund budget. The requirements in FY fifteen include purchase of two replacement cameras and then the purchase of two new cameras for the parking lot to get coverage in the parking lots. Replacement of doors and frames at the main entrance. I'm sure you've seen the bottom of the doors and the bottom of the frames are getting all corroded and rotted out. We're going to renovate two more bathrooms. We're trying to do two every year. These two will be on the first floor, near the junior ROTC area. We set aside some funds for unanticipated heat plant repairs, have some money for information technology that's more focused on infrastructure like switches. We have some money to renovate bullpens, batting cages, and dugouts by the baseball field that was just redone this past year, and then some paving repair between our location here in the library and Essex Rescue. And then there's a line called enhancing educational physical space, which we've put an allowance of fifty thousand dollars for improvements that will be determined through community engagement, looking at trying to get the biggest bang for the buck on a project that's a reasonably priced project that we can get, that we can show some progress on. Some projects that we have on our radar that may be beyond what we can cover in the capital plan, just to kind of put it out there and make sure people are aware. We would like to renovate the front entrances, the main entrance and the one that's, for lack of a better term, the guidance entrance. Would also like to renovate the courtyard in between those two entrances to really make the front of the building a lot more appealing to look at. Roof replacement, the roof, roofs have been replaced going on twenty years ago, so it's, we're just kind of marking time here. Pretty soon, we're going to have to redo those. The Building Trades and Natural Resources Building for CTE is in, you know, pretty rough shape. We need to do something there pretty soon. And the track is coming up on thirteen years old. That's about a, maybe fifteen years you can get out of a track before you have to resurface it. So over this next year, I think we need to do some work on defining and prioritizing projects and think about how we want to approach these at this time next year. Now looking at the CTE general fund budget. Things the board took into consideration included challenges such as the decrease in sixth semester average, which decreases some revenues, both grant revenues and tuition revenues. Also realizing that the state revenue rates are tied to the base education amount, which has to be set by law, so if that is actually set lower, we'd have some revenue challenge there to deal with, which is why we announced the tuition a little higher than what we're budgeting. We anticipate a decline in federal grant revenue. The CTE, like the high school, is dealing with a four and a half percent increase to their health insurance rate, and a bit of a higher increase in the SU assessment on the CTE side. Favorable conditions, we were able to reduce staffing a little bit. The early departure incentives, like the high school, were already paid off. We had some significant investments in hardware for the past two years, so we were able to scale back there a little bit. And then, like the high school, debt service costs were going down a bit. Looking at achievements that CTE can celebrate, obviously, a wide variety of course offerings, and most of those are full-day programs, awarding two hundred and thirteen industry-recognized credentials, high participation in career work experience, and college connection enrollments. Proud to once again host the annual community-serving learning days, which is always a big hit. And CTE was selected by the Agency of Education as a pilot site for the STEM Equity Pipeline and many others on this list, but we'll skip to the next slide where we talk about student membership in the National Technical Honor Society and then student achievement in the Skills USA competitions. The sixth semester average, as you know, peaked in FY eleven and twelve. We have been dealing with a little bit of a decrease since then, but FY fifteen, we believe, should be the last significant drop. The ideal sixth semester average would probably be about three hundred and ninety to four hundred, so we're looking at trying to bump up a little bit from where we are now. This pie chart just shows that, you know, we receive students from thirty-two different schools, although the majority of them do come from a handful, MMU, Essex High School, Milton, Colchester, and CDU. So this slide shows that the budget is going up by just zero point three percent, but because the sixth semester average is decreasing, which lowers revenues, it did drive the need for us to increase tuition by about three point eight percent, which, as I mentioned, is in line with the estimated increase in education spending statewide. And the pie chart showing where revenues come from, about fifty-four percent of the revenue comes from state grants. About forty-three percent is considered local, and most of that is local tuition from sending schools. And then Carl Perkins is our one federal grant, and then we have just a little bit of miscellaneous funds. And the significant revenue changes, fund balance is down about fifteen thousand, not quite as dramatic as the high school, but it is still a little bit less. Tuition is up eighty-one thousand, even though we have a lower sixth semester average because we increased the tuition rate, we were able to actually get a little bit of an increase in tuition revenue. Other restricted grants, we don't anticipate any other restricted grants, so we zeroed that line out. Carl Perkins is down about thirty thousand. We just anticipate that we're going to see less and less federal revenues in the future. Everything else combined is, shows an increase of about four hundred bucks. This pie chart shows where the money is spent. Salaries and benefits make up about seventy percent of the budget, and whenever you add in the shared service expense for Essex High School employees that support CTE, you're really up over seventy-five percent of the budget is in salaries and benefits. There's, the SU assessment is about five point five percent, debt service about four, and then everything else is pretty much, you know, on the smaller side until you're left with about seven point six percent for supplies, books, travel. That's a little higher than the high school. If you remember, their number was about four point three percent, but that's because in CTE, we have programs that, that use up supplies like culinary, printing, childcare. So they have a much higher supply budget, but they also have offsetting revenues. So this bar chart shows investment changes from fourteen to fifteen. Salaries, I mean, these aren't large percentages, but, you know, salaries looks like it's one of the big areas, but it's only a one point three percent increase because of the staffing adjustments we made. Benefits is up not even four percent, and it would be up less than that if not for the increased health rate. The SU assessment is one of the higher ones, and that's because of a higher allocation compared to the high school. Debt service is down. Technology is down considerably because of the investments we've made in the past few years. Maintenance projects up a little bit because, like the high school, we have some doors that are having some rotting issues that we need to replace. And then other is down. That's mostly travel and conference that we made reductions, and we'll talk about that in a moment. The significant investment changes, salaries and benefits are up one hundred and nine thousand dollars, but as I mentioned, that's only one point three percent for salaries and three point six for benefits. The SU assessment is up about seventy-six thousand dollars, and that's at a higher rate than the high school due to the allocation model, which kind of lags. It's based on this year's staffing levels, so next year, that might shift, and the high school might have a higher percentage. Also, the audit costs that got shifted into the SU assessment, so that's part of the reason why it's higher. Advertising, we've, like technology, we've made some pretty significant investments in advertising the past few years, and we think we can scale that back a little bit in FY fifteen. Travel and conferences is down about sixteen thousand dollars or so. Some of that is professional development travel that was funded by the federal grant, and some of it relates to Skills USA, which means that it's, it's going to be a little more competitive in order to be sent to the national competition. Technology, I've already mentioned this a few times, down one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. We've invested a lot in the past few years on technology, and the requirements that came in in FY fifteen were a little lower than, than the past few years, which was good. I already talked about maintenance projects. Utilities, the decrease, like the high school, related to natural gas. Debt service is down, like the high school, and then everything else combined is a decrease of about eight hundred dollars. And then to look at the staffing adjustments for the tech center, the reduction in pre-tech is as a result of dropping from four to three sections in pre-tech. The reduction in transportation is, as an employee is going to take over the role of transportation coordinator along with being a bus driver. And then for tax implications, you know that CTE receives revenue from many sources. The only real tax implication, then, is what you see as tech tuition within the high school And to summarize CTE, we tried to keep the tuition as low as possible, but we did have to deal with that drop in sixth semester average. The overall budget increase was only zero point three percent, and the tuition rate increased three point eight percent, which, as I mentioned, is what the state is expecting to see statewide as an increase in education spending, so we're pretty much on par with And then the last slide, the informational hearing is Monday, April seventh, at seven forty-five, in the high school cafeteria. The vote Tuesday, April eighth, with village residents coming here to the high school and town residents going to Essex Middle School. Part of this agenda item is asking for the board to approve the budget for the high school and the tech center. High school budget of twenty-four million thirteen thousand nine forty-eight, and the CTE budget of eight million four eighty-five nine seventy-seven. And then after you discuss that, the next agenda item is to adopt and sign the warning, and I believe you typically actually read through the warning before that's adopted. So any discussions or questions? And then after that, I'll ask for, maybe somebody can read off the numbers for the high school and the tech center once we're at that point.
Thank you, Grant. We'll let you catch your breath for a moment here for reviewing this. Once again, your work is invaluable for us to consider what budgets to bring forward to the public. For the record, this is our fifth review of this. Many of the questions that this board had have been asked and answered, and which you've presented to us already, so thank you for your good work on that. Is there anything from the board, any questions, comments, concerns that we want to bring forward here? I actually have two points to make, Grant, both, and it's really, again, a thank you to Principal Riordan and Director Travers and Superintendent De Nova and the work that you and your staff did, your teams did, helping construct this. I would like to note that the staffing adjustments at both CTE and EHS are reflective of how our student population is changing. So it's important, I think, for our public to know that as, as our population demographics are changing, our staffing, our staffing needs are changing commensurate with what's going on there, and so that's, that's a job well done for that. The other, the other point I would just want to make is a little bit of news I got in an email today that Principal Riordan and I got from our leader of the Visual, Academy of Visual and Performing Arts, Josh Polly, and I don't think he would mind if I shared in an open session the email that he sent this morning. And I think it ties in very nicely with some of the things that we've discussed in our budget review this evening. He said, "Good morning, Rob and Jack. I thought you'd find this interesting. We had a, we just had a student from Westford decide to attend EHS next year over Mount Mansfield because we have tubas available for him to play. The generous support of the school board and EHS made it possible for us to purchase these tubas this school year. Thank you." I think it's, it's a commitment from administration, a commitment from this board as we try and increase, you know, individual pathways for our students here, that it really has a real-time benefit to us in that now we'll have a additional tuition to students who is coming in from Westford because we have the right, we're offering the right services and support that this student is interested in. So I, I kind of took that as a little premonition this morning when I got that email for our tax review tonight, so job well done for everyone there, so, okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? So hearing none, and before we actually review what the warnings, what the warning should be, do we have a, I'd like to make a motion to approve a twenty-four million thirteen thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollar budget for Essex High School. One percent of that, two hundred and forty thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars for the, for the capital fund, and an eight million four hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollar budget for our Center for Technology Essex. Do we have a second? Second by Aaron? Okay. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Our motion for these budgets passed six to zero. At this point, I should read the warning, and so we can approve this warning, okay? Essex Community Educational Center, Union School District forty-six, annual meeting and public informational hearing, Monday, April seventh, two thousand and fourteen, at seven forty-five P M. The legal voters of the Essex Community Educational Center, Union District number forty-six, are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Essex Community Educational Center on Educational Drive in the cafeteria at said school at seven forty-five P M on Monday, April seventh, two thousand and fourteen, to take, to take action upon the articles below and thereafter to hold a public informational hearing on the proposed FY two thousand and fifteen budgets. Article one, to elect a moderator for one year, a clerk for one year, and a treasurer for one year. Article two, shall the Essex Community Educational Center, Union number forty-six, authorize the school directors to borrow money by issuance of bonds or notes not in excess of anticipated revenues of the next fiscal year? Whereupon, after disposition of said business, said meeting shall be adjourned to the following day, Tuesday, April eighth, two thousand and fourteen, when legal voters are hereby notified and warned to meet at Essex Middle School in the town, in the town of Essex between the hours of seven A M. and seven P M. between the hours of seven a.m. and seven P.M. And at the Essex Community Educational Center in the Villas of Essex Junction between the hours of seven a.m. and seven P.M. respectively, to vote by Australian ballot on Articles three through five. Article three, shall the voters of the Essex Community Educational Center, Union forty-six appropriate twenty-four million thirteen thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars necessary for the support of Essex High School for the year beginning July first, two thousand fourteen. Article four, shall the voters of the Essex Community Educational Center, Union number forty-six appropriate to the capital replacement reserve fund an amount not to exceed one percent of the high school budget for capital improvement items contained in the Essex Community Educational Center, Union District number forty-six capital plan. And article five, shall the voters of the Essex Community Educational Center, Union number forty-six appropriate eight million four hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars necessary for the support for the Center for, Center of Technology Essex for the year beginning July first, two thousand fourteen. Upon closing of the polls, the ballot boxes will be sealed, reopened at Park Street School, twenty-one Park Street in Essex Junction, and the ballots commingled and publicly counted by representatives of the Boards of Civil Authority of the Town of Essex and the Essex Junction Incorporated School District under the supervision of the Clerk of Essex Community Educational Center, Union District number forty-six. Do we have a motion to approve said warning?
Sure, moved.
Moved by Al. Do we have a second? Second by, second by Brian Donahue. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So, the warning has been issued. This will be routed around for everyone to sign today and we can get this posted at the appropriate locations, okay? All right? Thank you. Grant, is there anything else?
No, the next agenda item is planning for the two thousand fourteen annual meeting, so I'll stick around for that to see if there's anything you need me to do there.
Great, thank you. Actually, Judy, if I can borrow your pen. So, so the planning for the two thousand fourteen annual meeting, as we've just read in the warnings, you know, our meeting is at seven forty-five in the cafeteria that evening. The Prudential Committee has the six o'clock slot for that evening. Superintendent De Nova, is there anything that you would like to add on this particular topic for what we need to do to plan for our annual meeting?
So, there were questions in the past. We've had refreshments, we've had artwork. I'm not...
Performances.
Performances, the wonderful EHS jazz band has performed. I was just looking for board direction and how you would like to structure the evening.
If the room setup worked pretty well as far as, you know, how the tables were placed and the podium and the tables up front, then we can duplicate that. I guess the question is, you know, should we just scale back and do lighter on the refreshments and maybe not have a student performance?
I think we were thinking we'd just maybe still have like simple refreshments out, maybe coffee or just for the people that come out.
And I think CTE graciously volunteered to provide some cups and cream.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And some muffins and chocolate cookies.
Chocolate? Let me get that down for you.
No calories.
But I think we were...
About the answer, six thirty.
I think we were thinking though that we probably weren't going to do the entertainment portion of the evening this year, right?
It always feels kind of bad because the kids come out and they do such a great job and there's only ten people there.
Yeah, it's hard to ask them to come out for such low attendance.
And I'd like to ask you, is there any, anything that the Prudential Committee has mentioned on this topic that we need to be aware of for special considerations for the meeting that night since we're kind of, you know, butting up against one against the other?
No, they talked about presentation of the budget information and no other special accommodations for that evening.
I think they were kind of leaning the same direction.
Yes.
Do we have, do we have candidates lined up, interested parties lined up for moderator and clerk and treasurer?
I'm aware of PC having the letters going out for them.
I have not done any work on that particular topic yet, but there's time. We're not, that still needs to be identified for you, forty-six.
I wonder if I can be helpful, just let me know.
Will do. Anything else about the informational meeting that evening? So, it appears that we're going to have a rather low-key meeting, at least from a board planning standpoint. You know, we can collaborate together. In the past, the Chief Financial Officer and the Board Chairman have worked to craft that presentation and I would expect that same work to do. I mean, in essence, we have all seen it already, it's been presented to us this evening. So, there won't be any, any really new earth-shattering news that's going to come out, so.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, you have the most recent version, so if anything comes to mind that you would like me to change, you can just let me know. I will, I mean, for the board's sake, when, we will have the town meeting tax grids in time for the annual meeting and for the informational hearings. Those will probably end up getting inserted into the briefing. Other than that, it should just be minor tweaks that make you comfortable with the presentation.
Okay, so are we comfortable with where we are with that? Okay, well then, thank you, Grant.
Thank you.
And appreciate all the good work that you did helping, helping get this orchestrated for us, so.
Thank you.
Next, we have our principals' reports. Director Travers, let's start with you.
Okay. You have my report in front of you. I'm going to highlight maybe four bullets from the report that I submitted on February fifth. Under student achievement, the Student Services Office at CTE held an informational meeting for forty special educators from partner high schools this past February fifth. The work was to review procedures toward the facility and work on creating relationships in the hopes that we can better transition our students coming from the high schools, our special need students coming from the high schools into the tech center. It was very, very well attended, very well received. We got great feedback on it, so we'll continue to do it. Reason I highlight it is it's an extension of our appreciative inquiry process. It was one of the questions that came out of the work of the Student Services Office. And it is hosted and worked on by an advisory group. So, here's a project that represents two of the initiatives that are going on at the center. So, instead of sitting back and talking about why things aren't working, the special educator teachers decided to invite people in and talk about how things could go better. And of course, we fed them in the colonial room, which is never a bad thing. Another item I'd like to point out is under student achievement. This past February sixth, the National Entrepreneurship Week celebration was held in Montpelier. Part of that celebration included a statewide visual media competition featuring the work of tech centers and high school students from around the state. This year, Meg Walsh from South Burlington, a second-year graphic design and digital publishing student, won the competition for poster design. I shared a picture of her with her poster in the org notes. The picture doesn't do the poster justice, it really was a stunning poster. When I was talking to Tracy Brown, one of the two teachers in the graphic design and digital publishing program about the day, she said it was really quite a lot of fun. There were, there were over three hundred people in the cafeteria, many of them legislators. They drew down the winners from honorable mention to first place. And there was an audible gasp when Meg's poster was put up, it was just that much better than the rest of the field. I'll read an email. We were going back and forth and Tracy wrote, "It ends up that teaching the design part is easy and the most difficult yet most rewarding will always be students' personal growth. It gets me every time." We were talking about how much, how much poise this young lady had in front of the group of people and what she looked like coming in a couple of years ago and how she can speak about the work she does and the importance of her schooling to her. It was, it was a great moment, Tracy said. Under safe and healthy respectful learning environment, I know Rob will speak a little bit more about this. We do have the greeter stations at both entrances established. The one thing I wanted to point out is part of that includes a digital registration book that staff are using to announce their visitors beforehand so we can greet the visitors coming in as they come through the door. A quick look at that, it allows us to see visitor trends. When I wrote this, we had in a very short week, a hundred and forty visitors to the building. Sixty percent were visiting EHS and forty percent were visiting CTE. These kind of tools help us to kind of figure out what the trends are, where we may or may not need staffing. And as has been mentioned, we will need to keep an eye on what's happening in the parking lots because the staff that's manning the doors were in the parking lots at the same time. Public events over the month, we just had our open house. This past February eighth, numbers were solid, maybe even up a little bit. One of the nice things that we're seeing is middle school students and their families are coming through in higher numbers, partly due to the fact that six programs decided to host an hour-long experiential focused at middle school students. So, we had them come in an hour before the open house and they got to play around with the equipment in those programs, really helpful. Something I'd like the board to know, CTE, in addition to being identified as a STEM equity pipeline center, has been asked to present a workshop at the National Conference, at the NAEP Conference this April. The focus of the workshop is rethinking gender equity at career and technical centers. We'll be co-presenting with Vermont Works for Women and we're excited about having the opportunity to do that. Among the things we're going to feature are the changes in philosophies and strategies that the teachers are experiencing over the last two years as we focus on gender equity. That's my report.
I had one question. Did you just get invited to that event? That you just mentioned. I just was wondering, are you, do you feel like your budget is okay to be able to go to that with the number of people you want?
Part of the, part of being selected as a STEM equity pipeline school is a small grant of four thousand dollars. So, that's going to pay for travel and participation.
Oh, that's great.
I also noticed in the paper that UVM is looking at a hundred million dollar investment in STEM.
I'm not surprised.
Yeah, it's huge. I mean, to have that partnership with us is right in, right on target.
Any other questions for Director Travers? And Bob, thank you.
Thank you.
Principal Riordan, the floor is yours.
Sir, so a couple of, a couple of points to be aware of. We're going to be involved in a webinar tomorrow in terms of, from the Agency of Education in terms of being a pilot school for S-PAC and what that will involve. So, moving forward, we have some dates in March and April. But we'll get more concrete feedback in terms of what that will look like moving forward since this is an assessment that will be used exclusively on computers and different computers moving forward. We're working with teacher leaders and other specialists in the building, Eric LaClair, Carrie Fogg, to name a few, in terms of trying to figure out what an appropriate timeframe would be for students to take the assessment on this and give a hard faith, good faith effort on this assessment. And we can learn from it because obviously all schools go live fall of two thousand and fifteen in the S-PAC assessment, moving out of Kneecap. So, we still will have the Science Kneecap in May, which will occur as usual and will continue in the future. The difference is scheduling the S-PAC pilot, reading, writing, and mathematics in March or April with the appropriate timeframe. We're looking at about eight hours, what it looks like right now preliminarily, for each. Language arts and mathematics moving forward, given the fact it'll be computer-based. But we'll have more information as of tomorrow and we'll get the information out in terms of the specific dates. This is a little different than the pending paper assessment. In the past with Kneecap, in terms of having multiple delayed starts, is what we used to do in the fall. So, this may be a little different approach to get more full days for the juniors, but get it done in a shorter amount of time overall, but we'll have more to go on that. In terms of the discretionary income that the board has allowed me to have, I just want to give an update. We had five students travel with Gloria Reinstein down to Baltimore, Maryland, within the last few weeks to the Eastern Regional Music Consortium. And besides having an immersion with other top students in the eastern United States, they also got to perform for an international Chinese conductor. And speaking to two of the five students and a parent Saturday night at the Essex Has Talent Red Cross fundraiser, it was a game changer for them in terms of their overall music experience. So, once again, with the generosity of the funds that you allowed, I was able to assist in airline tickets, which allowed them to get there and experience it, but just a wonderful, wonderful event.
They didn't have any travel issues because of the snowstorms or anything?
No, they somehow dodged that bullet without any question. Yeah, yeah, good point. In terms of, you know, what Bob mentioned before, the greeter implementation midway through the year, starting on Monday, January twenty-seventh, I think collectively we put together a good communication plan with our respective staffs, with our respective students and the community. And it has gone remarkably well, even to the point of asking visitors to hand over the keys while they're in here. We've only had one or two, perhaps folks that were taken aback, but after an explanation, they're totally understanding. So, I feel really good about how it's, how it's rolled out so far. I have purchased the TIP four-one-one line, which will obviously be a CTE/EHS endeavor. I'm kind of in a hurry-up-and-wait mode right now because there are very few high schools that use the TIP four-one-one line. UVM currently does at the college level and there are many other colleges that have a system like this. And the high schools that use this system often are hooked and aligned with their local police. Well, in our, in our regular conversations with the Essex Police, they have requested for many valid reasons that we're not necessarily hooked with them. So, that being said, we're looking to get communication, and communication being with the high school in Texas, as to what their rollout was, how it is manned, how the oversight goes, and what communication there was to minimize pranks early on. So, we're in the process, I hope to have, I put April first, no pun intended. I do hope to get it in early April for the reason being, I'd like to have, if there are any kinks, I'd only like to have a couple of months of this school year to get through the kinks moving forward. But once again, just talking to some of the students in my advisory at the high school where we meet on Wednesday, you know, I just ran it by a couple of the advisory groups and there was pretty good reception for that being a method that students would respond to in terms of being our first eyes and ears in line of defense if a situation were to develop. But I think just like we did with the communication plan to all the parties, including the community... But I think just like we did with the communication plan to all the parties, including the community, we want to have a similar, you know, hyper-analyzed communication plan going out. So it is paid for, it's done. Now it's a matter of making sure we have all our ducks in a row moving forward. So rest assured, that will be, that will be coming soon. But I was and continue to be very pleasantly surprised, and as Bob mentioned, because of severe hypothermia, parking lots are not an issue at this point, but we all know that will change in the near future. In terms of course enrollments, this week right now, the counselors are getting to, every student had an appointment with his or her school counselor to register for courses the last two weeks. Now this week is taking into account those folks that were sick. Many students and staff are coming down with, you know, chest colds and, you know, what's typical this time of year. So there's a lot of makeups this week. So we should have everybody accounted for by the end of this week, which means numbers will start to flow freely during vacation week for administration and counseling and we should have some pretty hard numbers as early as March 7th, which is a Friday, or even the 10th in terms of sections. So we're right on course in terms of what our normal timeline is there and that's going really well. The one piece I did include, just for your information, is the recently approved school quality standards that the state board has approved and just, you know, Grant did a wonderful job a few minutes ago, but just to be aware that like anything else, there are some things that are being moved forward that are going to be having cost implications shifting from Montpelier to the local levels. And it's all good, but we have to really be aware of it. For example, a few years ago, there was work in the legislation through good work of an elementary or middle school student in Williston, that all students before they leave high school should be exposed to CPR. It's great, but now we add it into our health curriculum or our PE curriculum and there are costs associated with it, but that's absorbed at the local levels. So that's important. The concussion law, wonderful legislation on top of the law that previously existed for only one year, and there was another law before the first law could really be evaluated. That's fine and we've been, I think, on top of it from a statewide perspective with Ed's work and Leo's work and our trainers and getting baseline measurements and things of that nature. And meeting with the task force that was on Vermont Public Television in October, October 8th, I believe, having Dr. Maynard come in and kind of look at what we're doing from the ground up in terms of everything from fitting kids to football helmets to communication between the athletic department and the nurses and the nurses back to the athletic department and then our communication to the teachers in terms of the learning impacts of concussions. And we have data and we've been keeping data. So, but once again, there's continued talk about adding, adding more sports to what the collision sports that have already been identified are, which is football, ice hockey, wrestling, and lacrosse. And there's talk of adding basketball and soccer. And obviously we have rugby, so hello, there's another one. Point being made is as these good intentions are added on, that means more people covering not only games but practices. Now you don't have to cover each practice specifically, but someone has to be available with a radio so that if someone is injured on site or suspected of being injured, then that's going to have to be addressed, obviously for the benefit of the student athletes. That has cost implications. And lastly, the flexible pathways law, which is wonderful philosophically speaking, there's going to be a significant shift. Let me rewind a bit. High school students, juniors, and seniors have had the opportunity to have one college course free of charge. It's been increased to two college courses free of charge. And FY16, that funding goes from the state to here. That's significant. So as we look ahead, it's a 20, and there's also staff ratios in here that hopefully got your attention, including school counselors as well as teachers. So just, an FYI, this was recently passed in December. It goes into effect 15 calendar days, which is the 1st of January, if you will, recognizing they did that most budgets were well underway. But I guess this is just a FYI moving forward so that everybody has their eyes wide open in terms of, you know, some wonderful intentions that have local, increasingly local cost implications. And that's, that's kind of the main addition that I just wanted everybody to be aware of moving forward. It's all good, good intentions, but those are just three examples of how the costs are going to be shifted to the local level of all schools, certainly not, and we're in a very good position in Chittenden County in terms of the, in terms of the concussion and the dual enrollment piece as compared to perhaps some other schools in the state. So just an FYI there. That's my report.
Question?
Sure.
It was, I think that the previous meeting or maybe the meeting before, we discussed the dual enrollment cost that could be coming back here in 2016. Estimated it, for just that one program, it'd be a $400,000 cost?
Well, that's not specifically to us. It wouldn't be quite, although it's still, I went to the meeting, January 22nd at CCB, which was the first meeting for dual enrollment. Andrew Roy, new school counselor, and I, we drove down. And what's being, you bring up a good point. What's being negotiated is what the cost is going to be for the three credits because of course you have everything from Johnson, Linden, Castleton, CCB, and UVM.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the next determination as to what is that tuition figure going to be? And right now, there's, there's three credits and we've, I can give you the, actually, I will give you the next, the next board meeting, the breakdown in terms of where the number of students per school and where they're accessing currently three credits.
Hmm.
So, and predominantly those credits, those college courses are being accessed right now during the summer because there's less scheduling conflict during the day and with all the extracurriculars that our students participate in, it's problematic to get to UVM or even CCB for that matter. So a lot of that, I think 29 students we had so far this year were accessing dual enrollment and it was predominantly in the summer. But I can get you more accurate numbers and once we get the figure that they're going to use for a tuition basis, which they're going to charge, that will help inform us what it may be.
Okay.
But we'll be way ahead of this because this is FY16.
That's a big, that's a big number.
Yeah, it's a good point, though.
Yeah. Well.
Would, it's interesting you said that they would be attending these classes in the summer because of schedule considerations, right? So, but that, doesn't that present some unique challenges to us in that, I'm assuming it's the summer between the junior and senior year going into high school? Have we got students ready to take college-level courses at that point in their academic development? Or similarly, would we be offering this opportunity to our seniors who may have graduated but haven't, you know, post-graduation college credit?
No, once a student, that's a good question. Once a student graduates, that's it.
That's it?
Yes.
So that, okay, and that's?
Yes.
Okay.
The other thing that is kind of balancing the numbers to a certain degree is the number of advanced placement courses.
Right.
The CLEP testing, which is just underway and really hasn't caught fire yet, but it's getting more and more attention, you know, which is, which is very helpful. The answer to your first question, yes, there are, there certainly are some students between their junior and senior year that are definitely capable. They typically, we had more than a half a dozen students that did the Governor's Institute, whether it was engineering or some other strand, and also took a college course in the summer. So it certainly is, it certainly is possible.
Okay.
That that will occur. But we always have the situation, whether it's a focused area, pathway, there's only so much time, a finite amount of time during the school day that students run into and that's the, that's the issue. The other piece, of course, is, which has really gained popularity, is Stacy Anthony's AP Stats, which also, if you take the exam, the UVM exam, you get three stats, 111 credits, which is really popular to our students. Last year and this year, we've got multiple sections of AP Stats.
So our students in that, is there a tuition cost for that?
No.
So that is a good way for us to provide without an additional cost. But I was going to thank you for tracking the students this year.
Yep.
And next year so that when we do the financial modeling moving forward, we'll have some baseline.
And I guess I'll change my answer. I said no to not yet, not knowing if there's going to be a change in terms of, I don't know that there would be, but, you know, but certainly no at this point. It's been a, it's been a very good relationship with UVM.
Hopefully they'll be able to negotiate a good.
Yes. Well, I think our Fab Lab and reciprocal agreement with Dean Chip Cole and Joe Chase, it's done, and Jim Dermeier has done a, has done a lot to, you know, fertile the grounds. We have a good relationship.
Good.
If I could just comment, one thing that Rob did have in his report that he didn't share yet is one of the biggest events at the high school annually.
Oh, March 13th.
Yes, the Fine Arts Night. I mean, there's like, parking is difficult at night, so if you can get in early, it is one of the premier events the school hosts annually.
And it does include all the Essex Town schools as well.
Yes, and Fine Arts, including performing arts.
Yep.
So put that in your calendars if you can reserve the date because it's well worth your time.
It is. And actually, there's going to be, I'm glad you brought that up, there's going to be a combination of STEM and Fine Arts with some dancers and some, well, I don't want to, I'm not going to spoil it. I'm just going to say there's a good combination of STEM and dancing with their costumes. I'm just going to leave it at that.
Ah, a little teaser.
Leanne Smith with Bonnie Deskotasi. I'm going to leave it at that.
Look forward to it.
Yes.
Yes.
Those, speaking as a board member, nothing makes you prouder.
Yep.
Than seeing the K through 12 curriculum and those kids come along, so.
Yep. Certainly a highlight.
Uh.
Can I just ask for a clarification on the, on the grading? You have a plan, the plan is to have a recommendation by April? Is that a recommendation to who?
With the faculty after they get all the information?
So it's on this decision-making model as compared to the one in 2009? So it's a recommendation to the faculty in April?
Yeah.
Okay. That's, I was just trying to figure out.
Yeah, because we have new information, well, we have new information from 2009 now and Mrs. Astor's letter and rationale behind it, presenting that, in addition to the information presented by Mr. Root and Mrs. Rath in 2009.
Okay. Yeah, I was just trying to figure out where that, where that was going. Thank you.
Trying to get it in a timely manner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Any other questions for our principal of Essex High School? Next on our agenda, the reports from board task teams. There's a couple of reports I'll make, but I'm going to just defer to the end on, on both communications and on a CCSU board status report. But Ryan or Aaron, can either of you comment where we are with negotiations?
Yeah, they're, they're happening.
It was a good.
I'm, I can't remember what.
It was, it was about a week ago, a week to 10 days ago. And we kind of got, was it, would you call it like a status report on just small, the small group?
Yeah.
We're going well from, was, what I got is kind of an update. Things were really progressing well. Things seemed very encouraging. And then, but I think there were a few more of the small group things that just needed to be gone through, right?
The next small group meeting is tomorrow. So we'll be meeting at 3:00 in the small group and continuing on the preliminary tentative agreements with the language. The small group is only working on the language of the unified contract.
Unified contract. That's, that's what the focus has been so far.
And I think that seems to really be something that has been really, you know, embraced, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then I don't think, we have yet to calendar our next meeting, so we're getting an update on that soon, I'm sure.
Yeah, I think we were talking mid-March tentatively to have wrapped up the small group stuff and start talking about focusing on the large group.
Okay.
Work.
Okay, just my, my, you know, our current contract expires on the 30th of June, right? And, and do we expect that the large group work and the association will be able to come to, come to something before the 30th of June or what's the outlook, what's the outlook on that right now?
That's certainly my expectation.
Okay, right.
I'd say the tone right now seems good.
Yeah.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Policy?
Yeah, I'll speak to that. We were kind of at a skeleton crew, our last one. There's actually one representative from each board and Paul. So some of the stuff that we wanted to talk about, B21 of those and the so-called, you know, cupcake policy was kind of put on hold. So what we ended up doing was talking about, looking through and cleaning up some of the wellness policy and within that with some of the stuff we noticed, like with nursing responsibilities, dispersion of medications. It seemed like every scenario, whether it was head lice or something else, had a separate policy or separate location. So we really just kind of sat around, consolidated some of that. So it was this kind of cleanup work because we knew there were some hot button issues in these other policies that people, for whatever reason, just couldn't be there, so we postponed that. And we just did kind of work, it's cleaning up work for that particular, that was about it. I think there's one coming up.
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
Wednesday.
I think at the SU level, there's some hope that each board may provide, if there is any, some guidance to the policy subcommittee with regards to B20.
B20.
And that's on all local board agendas for their upcoming meetings. Give this board to talk about it under the SU board. So we can get the feedback.
Leader agenda.
Next, kind of split as to which way I want to go here. I'll talk about leaders of work. Leaders of work focus has been this year on the superintendent evaluation process. Our next meeting was scheduled for the 18th of February, which is tomorrow night, but that got usurped by some other CCSU board stuff, which I'll talk about in a moment. Don't know Superintendent De Nova, when, if we've, I know we've had a meeting wizard set up to reschedule when the next leaders of work is, but I, I don't recall if that's date's been established yet.
I don't know if it's finalized yet.
Okay. A couple of things just about the superintendent search, the superintendent evaluation process that this board should know is that it's, it's, two things are happening in parallel. The, the one, one issue, one issue that the CCSU board gave back on to Superintendent De Nova at our last SU board meeting was a formative assessment on what our superintendent had presented as her entry plan to evaluate, her self-evaluation against that and against the criteria that we had, that we had established for her for some job description, I'm trying to think, standards, standards, the standards base that, that a superintendent would be evaluated by. So we're on the process of making that happen. In parallel with that is we're also working on getting for next fiscal year, F. In parallel with that is we're also working on getting for next fiscal year, FY fifteen, the, uh, the needs assessments and requirements for the next superintendent evaluation. For, when I say the next, I'm talking about next year's superintendent's evaluation. So that it's not just a, a entry plan measurement and needs assessment, but those critical items that each of the boards that our administration supports has, has identified. So we're, we're making progress on that. So that's where we are with leaders of work.
Al, you wanna comment on communications?
Sure. We've had a couple of really major activities go on with communications. Over the last one to two years, there have been a number of issues and needs that have come up before the board. Uh, some of them are policy, some of them, information, communications, engagement, et cetera. And I've been thinking about it for a long time. So I tried to pull together an out-of-the-box presentation that says, you know, what if? Can we, from an AI perspective, leverage the existing technology that we have in place to look and address different kinds of issues differently? And at that initial meeting, I think Judy, you said, well, why don't we have a, a presentation? Meet with IT, come back, and we'll see where we intersect. Remember that? Well, we don't quite intersect, but what we do do is the first page after coming into the portal is sort of a bigger picture, status, and informational page that serves as a baseline for the entire student-staff body. And that baseline consists of many different components. Now, keep in mind, this was out of the box to start the thinking and conversation process. So that's what we did. Pulled the presentation together. And what I have tonight is, I have a few copies left of just a sketched description of the initial presentation. Went ahead and met with IT, and we discussed a lot of the background and the issues, how the organization and students relate and interact. It was a two-hour discussion. Some of the things that came out of there were just some really great work that Helen has done in supporting our high school students. I mean, I, she's, I don't know how much of it is automated and how much is manual. But I can tell you this, she's pretty committed, so, and the information for students is very powerful. So students that are using this, uh, really have a leg up, leverage in getting to teachers, getting to homework, getting to lots of different kinds of information. Some of the objectives here were a motivational message, a level playing field for information, some visual status displays, grading homework, and learning plans and so forth. But there's one area that I keep coming back to that I can't seem to address without technology. One of them that we talked about was health and safety, and we talked about when a student has a personal crisis, who do they reach quickly? Keeping my school safe, the four-eleven tip line, drug abuse. And of course, there's another big one out here is bullying, and we've talked a lot about that. In one example, and I'd like to just use this as an example. There are times when all the educational services that we have can't alert students to a real danger. One of them is in the area of drugs and heroin, and we see that on the news just about every night. If it's not in the news, it's in the Burlington Free Press. So did a little thinking about it, and you would think, well, what's, could we have a heroin issue here? And probably not, and probably a very small number. But it actually did happen to a Colchester High School student in two thousand eleven. And the danger here is that the drug dealers are shifting from straight heroin to mixing other designer drugs in with that heroin. And one of the most recent, uh, striking, uh, changes has been with, uh, let me just grab the article while I'm here.
So, so.
With pheny, phenenol.
Good discussion, Al. I wanna focus back on our communications, how this relates there.
Well, what happened, what happened is when we got done with that, because this, this thing was so powerful, it needs to be communicated quickly. But in the communications, when Helen was sitting there thinking about this, one of the lights came on for her. She says, well, what this is about is engagement and accountability. And we had quite a discussion about that. So I know she really appreciates the perspective and thinking about the issue. Now, eighty-three percent of our students actually go on to college. And we had a discussion about Naviance, which is a more systematic way of enabling the enrollment process for students at college. So rather than working on the strategic proposal to move this forward, decision was made to go ahead and roll out Naviance first. So that's where we stand. And there's a lot of thinking and discussion going, still going on. It's a good, it's a good discussion.
This relates to the communications in, we talk about through the portal? Is that what all this is about? So we're talking about student safety?
Issue, all kinds of issues, you know? And what, from a long-term perspective, what might be a way to leverage this technology to, to better interact with students, families, administration? It's a, it's a big issue, big discussion, and it's just the start of a conversation.
So thank you, Al. I, I just wanna pick up there. A lot of what Al had discussed is mentioned in, in our org notes from the meeting on the eleventh of January. We did have a follow-up meeting on the eleventh of February, focusing on two things that, uh, one, that I would like this board to be made aware of. The, the, the portal isn't just for a student or parent portal, but it, but it also is a board portal, okay? And that there are, there's information that the board needs to be aware of. Agendas, meeting minutes, annual reports, uh, uh, board member information exchanges, et cetera. One of the things that we are going to see as board members in the near future, i.e., the first of March, uh, we've, we've snapped the line. That we will no longer, as board members, be receiving through emails, our org notes, or, or that type of information. What we will be receiving is a email to our CCSUVT.org domain emails that the information is posted. There'll be a link there, so we won't get attachments in an email. We'll be getting a, a link to go to, to the board. And, and have us take advantage of decreasing some of our email bandwidth. The information is constant, it's posted there, and, and we'll be able to share communications, look at calendars. There's just a plethora of information that's available there.
Information won't be lost.
And, that's right. So, so a movement on, on that foot. The other thing that came up, and it, it came up in light of a follow-on discussion, or discussion that we were having in terms of preparing for our annual meeting, it was what, what can we do to prepare for the, for the, our annual meeting? And the, Rob, this is more really a discussion for you, and I apologize, kinda catching you blind here, but, but the topic came up about a voter registration drive for our eighteen-year-old high school students. And being able to have them participate in our school, our school budget voting in, in April, those who are available. I, I need to come in and, and talk with you specifically about this, but, uh, something that, uh, that our, our student representative was interested in championing through student government. And it does match with very well, in my opinion, what, what our EHS mission statement is, is about achieving behaviors, skills, and knowledge essential to become contributing members of their community. Uh, what better way to become a contributing measure of the community than to become a registered voter and actively participate in, in these things, these opportunities? And so something that I can.
I can easily set that up. We typically work with Linda, in the past, Linda Myers and Debbie Evans. They come in and they, they swear them right during, you know, during lunches, and it's done.
Um, and.
So that's a good thing.
And, and, and Rob, I, I don't mean to discount you, but I know that we, we have many different dis, you know, our students come from thirty-two different communities, and, and I can't, I, I can't support making sure each of our students get registered in each of their communities, right? But, uh.
Actually, Lynn Vera does do a huge push for voter registration for eighteen-year-olds.
Okay, okay.
Do, do we, does anybody know the date, the deadline before, like, when they need to be registered in order to vote?
I, I.
I can get that, I can leave in.
Thank you, 'cause then we could take joint effort on making it happen.
Um, I, I do believe, though, that we as school board can, or in as administration, can, can take actions to allow our, when it comes Voting Day, April eighth, you know, to allow students time to go and exercise their civic responsibilities. Again, I can see that for students in Essex Junction who are here. Maybe we can make accommodations for Essex Town, I don't know. But I certainly don't see how we can do it for every one of our CTE students unless they do it as part of their local, you know, situation, depending on where that is. Anyway, it's something, I don't wanna spend a lot of time here talking about it, but it is one way we're looking at trying to.
Definitely.
Uh, increase our student participation in that. So that was the other communication thing.
Good suggestion.
Okay.
February twenty-sixth is the last ticket register before Town Meeting Day, so.
Oh, before Town Meeting, okay, we're, we're good, okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, uh. Finally, uh, I think that, that wraps up our reports and task teams here. We do have a CCSU board update, though. The focus on CCSU board, of which Ryan, Brian, and I represent U forty-six on that board, has been on our superintendent search process. To that end, uh, the, just to kinda summarize where we are with that, the, the CCSU board has remanded action to what's called the, the SAC, the advisory, Superintendent Advisory Committee, was that? Search Advisory Committee, to go through a process, working with our facilitator, Mr. Brian O'Regan, on, uh, reviewing this superintendent search. This, this really, and by the way, the committee was comprised of ten members, I think I've shared this with you. Three teachers from the CCSU, three administrators, three community members, and one high school student comprised that board. The, the board has done its due diligence in reviewing the applicants, conducting interviews, and their final report back to the CCSU will be delivered tomorrow evening at a CCSU board meeting. That's why we're not having leaders at work, we're having a CCSU board meeting tomorrow night, which is an open meeting, and I would encourage anyone who wants to to come in and observe what, uh, what the results are of that deliverable. Candidates have been identified and will be interviewed. So, uh.
No one has been selected?
No one has been sel, no, no.
It's an interview.
It's, it's, the, the interview, again, this, the, uh, the Search Action Committee's report has kind of whittled the field down, but it's up to the CCSU board to make that final decision. The CCSU board will be presented with the candidates tomorrow evening.
Okay, and then the decision will be made sometime later?
Sometime later, correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions on that? Good. Anything else I'm missing, Brian or Ryan, from CCSU board that?
Uh, the student data management system was presented, um, to the SU board and approved to enter into a contract with Admin Inform. So we're, uh, very appreciative, uh, of being able to move forward with the goal of having a student achievement data management system that will help inform instruction and move us forward with the learning process.
A lot of, a lot of work, and, and I apologize for not addressing that earlier, Judy, but, uh, our, our Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Department put a lot of work in trying to find the right tool for, for this process and present it to the board there and did, did a good job, so. Any other CCSU questions for me? Hearing none, let's move on then. Let's go to the consent agenda.
Is that where we were gonna speak about B twenty?
Uh, yes, it was where we were gonna speak about B twenty. Uh, when, we were gonna, we say talk about B twenty during the consent agenda or during the CCSU?
During the CCSU.
That's what I thought, so.
So.
So before we move off the CCSU issue, let's, let's kinda reel it back in here and talk about B twenty, okay?
So, um, B twenty was included in the packet. It's, um, been a topic that the policy subcommittees looked at a couple of times. The most recent time, the policy subcommittee, which is comprised of three, I think, pretty much three members from each of the boards, um, looked at it and, um, received feedback from the Educational Leadership Group, um, as well as some teachers and so forth, and recommended no changes. But then there was some, um, there was some concerns, it was sort of remanded back to us to look at it again. But what's, what we recognized is that it's been difficult. Usually the policy subcommittee's looking at something with a very targeted need, to bring something either in alignment with current legislation or to meet some very stated purpose. So we're, um, I think what, what's being asked for is, in this board's review of the B twenty as it stands, is there something specific that you would like the policy subcommittee to be working on?
Anybody? You know, a B, B twenty has always been one of these policies that has caused some consternation in, in our, just, in our supervisor union, either between, with board members, with administration, with staff, and how we can interact together. I think Brian has hit the nail on the head, that, you know, the due diligence has been done and, and no recommendation, uh, recommendations not to change it has, has been established. But, uh, you know, is this, is that a? Now's our chance to affect that, and, uh, if, if, I would strongly, strongly recommend that every one of us be aware of what policy B twenty, Board Staff Communications, is in there and how we, how we interact with each other, when I mean that. and how we, how we interact with each other, when I mean that is not just Board to Board, but Board to Administration, Board to Faculty, Faculty to Board. Those, those kind of interactions are, are addressed in this particular policy. And, uh, we have an opportunity to affect that. And what Brian's asking for is, is how we as Board members would like to see some things addressed in that.
Do you, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, what's your issue?
I think we have some troubles with our communication at times. And we think that it's stuck up in B twenty, and it's really not. Last time that it was revised, in two thousand and eight, the revision actually, the only thing that was changed with B twenty was the word official was inserted. Um, in an attempt to try to say, really, no, these are official communications, more like grievances, issues of labor contracts, you know?
Presentations to the Board, those are all kind of official.
Yeah. So, it, it tried to steer, it tried to steer B twenty away from free-flowing communication, tried to move it to say, you know, we don't want to have, we don't want to have sidebar discussions about grievances. We want to, we want to go back, we want to handle that the right way. I think everybody looks for a policy to try to protect against what is the imaginable. Someone sort of going off on their own, either staff or Board. You know, it's, when the Educational Leadership Team got together, they saw that the policy provided some protection in case somebody started, you know, really becoming overly interested in everything that they did, you know, sort of aspect. And that, that they could use the policy to give them some space, either working with their supervisor or the superintendent. And I think that the Board sees this so that we're not necessarily getting, you know, every time we go to Hannaford's, we're not holding a public information hearing every time we go grocery shopping, that we have some boundaries as well. So, you know, I think we're just trying to figure something out, I don't think it's in B twenty. I, I think it's-
I think I'd probably have to agree with that.
I think some of it might be in Board orientation, I think some of it might be in training.
Mm-hmm.
I think some of it might be in relationships.
Mm-hmm.
Which is a lot harder than policy work.
It might be interesting, too, like, you know, when a new Board member comes on, you know, maybe having them be assigned, I don't know if mentor is really the right word, but maybe having them, um, you know, maybe spend a few meet, initial meetings that they go to, being kind of assigned with a more senior Board member. And I remember when I started, I think it was right around budget time, and there was just like a lot of things initially that were very, whether it was a term or an acronym or, and I, I honestly do recall being fairly lost in the beginning with just, you know, it's just almost like, some of, some of it was almost like a little bit of a different language. I don't know, that's just a thought I just had, was, you know, to help build, um, help build the inter-Board relationships. You know, if you're new to the Board, you're the, you know, the new kid on the block, um, maybe that would be something that might help. But I, I agree, I guess that, that is something that would just be outside of the policy. We don't want to, maybe, we don't want to create another policy.
No, no. One of, one of the things is, in my time of serving on the Board, that, that B twenty has, has been a challenge for us, is that the districts within CCSU each have their own individual culture. And, and how we and U forty-six perceive B twenty isn't necessarily the way the Prudential Committee views B twenty, nor the way Westford views B twenty. And so, trying, you know, each of us have our own idiosyncrasies and, like I say, cultures and the way that we, we communicate. Trying to write a policy that meets the needs of all the districts within CCSU is, can be a challenge, and this is, this is one of them. I, I don't know if my perception is, is within U forty-six. The B twenty policy isn't as problematic perhaps as it is in other districts. And, uh, I'm not sure that, that, uh, we, we see things, I, I think Brian hits the nail, again, hits the nail on the head here. I don't know if there's, there's a big issue for U forty-six, and maybe the silence is deafening here, we, you know, I, we don't see this as a, any, any change necessary in B twenty as it exists. I don't think we would have that same feedback coming from other school districts. And, and I think that'll manifest itself when, inside your, inside the Policy Subcommittee, you know, so.
I can't, I apologize for not remembering this, but is there also some sort of a code of conduct that a Board member would sign off on when they start?
Yeah, this is Vermont.
Annual.
Yeah.
And that, could that, that also maybe, would that, would that address any of those sort of things, or?
Well, this, you know, this interest in B twenty came up at the time during the, the, the climate survey that was, um, that was conducted prior to the, the scientific climate survey that, that is now part of what we do on an annual basis. And so, that there was a lot of concern that B twenty had through, through its wording, that all official communications required them to go through the superintendent. And therefore, there was a presumption that all communications in totality were required. So, it's, it's kind of interesting how, you know, one attempt back in two thousand and eight to try to direct this towards official communications didn't have the intended consequences to, to kind of recognize that there are other types of communications. The Committee at one time started to orient the very last part, social interactions, and started to say, what if we put that and led the policy with the social interactions? And saying that we all have a keen interest in our schools and our education in general, and that we get together and talk sometimes. And that we understand that we have, you know, that we, we just kind of need to get along when we do so. And would, could that set a better tone? You know, could, is it the tone of the policy that maybe is setting us up, so? But I, I think Jack is right that, that there's, there's different cultures. I mean, it's not, it's not unheard of that the relationship of particularly like parents and even some ways in Board members in an elementary school district is different than in a high school district. Those relationships are much keener than you'd see here. So, we may get a lot more feedback in the K eight school, from the K eight Boards than we get from here.
Yeah, I think it's all sort of, I mean, I think it comes out of mostly the Climate Committee. And there was a, a feeling that the policy itself was limiting. And I, I don't think that, that feeling comes from the language in the policy, actually. I think it comes from various and sundry things, whether it's the implementation of the policy, the particular personalities that were doing the implementing of the policy, and the relationships that surrounded the policy that really have created that sort of straw man of a, of the policy. And I think that still, to some extent, exists in the, just the understanding of the policy out there in, in the community, whether it's the teachers or the Boards or whatever. I don't think that has changed at all. You know what I mean? I think that's what the desire is, and I don't know, I think Brian's point is that it's not a pol, like a language change that will really change that. So, that's, I think that's really the, the struggle, and why it keeps coming up, you know, why it's sort of the zombie policy, it's our day.
And I, I've argued for a while that, you know, the timing of our meetings, the structure of our meetings, using Robert's rules, having public to be heard in the beginning, closing it down. I, I don't know if they necessarily are ones that, that are intended for open and free communication. Now, that might be fine, you know, that if that's our intended purpose, I think we've accomplished it. But if, every now and then, we seem to really wish for open and free communication. We haven't made too many substantive changes that would start to get at that. You know, we still make this a fairly undesirable environment for somebody to come and invest this much time so that they can have a few moments to speak in a very unrelated moment in time to a topic. So, you know, I, I think we, we might have to look at things that are a little bit more inward than at a policy.
All right. So, Brian, what, as a wrap up this particular topic, I'm not hearing any particular thing coming from U forty-six to take back to the Policy Subcommittee with respect to B twenty, but thank you for your thoughtful discussions and considerations on this this evening. Next, our consent agenda, we have, we have the, you were going to say something else?
Yes, I have one I have to add. From Rob's report, the Youth Survey, Reserving.
Well, that's, that's, that's an item that's calendared for future Board meeting, right? We're not, we, we haven't gotten there yet, we, I want to-
We're meeting Wednesday first.
Okay. The, the consent agenda this evening for approving the warrants, approving the meeting minutes of December sixteenth, January sixth, ninth, thirteenth, sixteenth, a letter of resignation and a-
Two.
Two letters of resignation. Three letters of resignation. That's, that's correct. One of them was, was new news today, right? Superintendent De Nova, yeah? And Leave of Absence Request. I, I, before I ask for a motion, I, I know there's some papers passing around, so maybe I'll just wait a minute for consideration before we, for us to review these before we ask for a-
So, for some reason, I have only one main copy of that one, so I think if you could share, you take-
This one, this one missed.
Oh, that was the one that was missing?
No, I think this was the one that had been distributed.
Uh, yes.
So, the one that- There's only org notes. So, the letter of resignation in the org notes that the Board is asked to accept with regrets and appreciation is from School Counselor Valerie Smith. And that was one of your attachments. The letter that just was circulated, again with regrets, is Director of Guidance Michelle Raff. And also, um, with regrets is Marsh O'Neill. With definite appreciation for many years of service to CTE. And all three will be sorely missed, but we wish them well as they move on to their next chapters.
Judy, if I can just make a, just an observational comment, my understanding is, is this is going to be the trend?
I think, like, as a Board member in this district, and obviously districts all across the state, um, is it, is it my understanding that this will be the trend? That we are going to start seeing a lot of senior teachers, educators, staff members? This is going to be something that we're, you know, it's just going to be a trend that's going on, probably not even just, you know, in Vermont, I think nationally, so. It's just, it's just hard, hard, because, you know, the team takes some, some real hits when we lose people that have been with us for so long and have done so much. So, it's interesting, because I think-
You're starting to see the-
It's gonna, the, the culture's going to change, the, you know, the age of teachers is going to change, it's really going to make a whole new mix, you know? So, it's really, I think it's really sad in so many ways, but, you know, I don't know, it's, it's going to be hard to replace these people. You know, but I know there's also a lot of younger, really qualified people, too, but it's just going to make the mix a lot different.
True.
Yeah, it's, there's, you know, it's, um-
Be interesting to see.
It is going to be a change, and we consider forty to fifty percent of our workforce will be transitioning in the next two to three years. So, we know that hiring, which is one of the most important decisions an organization makes, will be front and center. Times like this, I'm sincerely thankful for the veteran experience of our principals, who lead search committees, as you can see by the next, um-
So, so here's what I'd like to do, uh, we have the consent agenda for approving the warrants, the minutes, a letter of resignation that was included in the org notes, plus two additional letters that have been floated around, and then the letter of, Leave of Absence Request that was in the org notes. Is there a need to pull any of these items from the consent agenda? I, I'll hold, hold on, I'll hold that for a second, I'm going to handle that one separately. Okay, do I have a motion to-
Some.
Move by Ryan to accept the consent agenda? A second by Aaron, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda passes six-nil. In addition, our Superintendent has floated a recommendation for hire for a professional appointment to us. This was a, 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 a backfill of an existing position-
Position?
That we were looking to fill, that, uh, Principal Reardon and his team have done their due diligence and have made a recommendation. This, with the start date of the, the first of July.
So, I bring this recommendation to you, um, as pending the license of the candidate. The candidate was licensed and needs to renew that, so just pending license renewal.
About the last five years out of the state.
Right. So, uh, so that we can issue a letter of intent.
Okay. And with the start date of the first of July, her teacher's contract would be with all the other ones that we would, that we would sign, we're just, we would, what this gives administration authority to do with this Board's action tonight is to let her know that it's a letter of intent, right? Okay?
Correct.
The current employee is done June thirtieth.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion to approve this recommendation for a new hire for the Director's Support Services for EHS. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six-nil. Okay. Next, we have the agenda items that should be calendared for future Board meetings. Mr. Bombardier?
Yes. I think we're pretty much on track. I, I did want to ask about the S-VAC. There, there are so many different kinds of computers we have, and the time element for testing being over eight hours. I just wonder if we've got enough, how much time the IT department's going to require to test all of these different platforms that they all- Will be functional, and then there's the investment of the student time. Is this a real strategy, is it doable?
Yes. And IT's been involved since the day one.
So, it's a turnkey package, you plug and play.
For the most part. We'll get more information when we- For the most part. We'll get more information when we have the webinar tomorrow.
Okay, so that's coming up.
Which they'll be part of, Dave being IT.
I just wanted to be sure. That's going to affect a lot, a lot of people.
There was one thing that Mr. Bombardier mentioned, and it was in our, in our board notes tonight, too, is the... What am I, can I find here? I circled it. The risk assessment.
Youth risk, youth risk behavior survey.
Youth risk behavior survey. We'll have, we'll have that data available for our next meeting.
Good.
Okay.
We have our first meeting to analyze the results Wednesday.
Okay.
Judy, when is staff appreciation?
May.
Yeah, it's... A month away.
Yeah.
Just thought maybe it might be...
Never too early to begin, I think.
Yeah, just so that we're not, because you figure our next, if we talk about it at our next meeting, maybe it would be.
Yeah, that'd be right.
You know, just so we're not too late in the game.
And one other.
Our next meeting is...
Oh, right.
Our next meeting is?
Ha ha!
May 17th, after April.
Well, we have a reorg.
We have a reorg in April.
That would be a good time, depends on when.
Okay.
Community leaders will all be seated at, by the next meeting.
What is the, what is the? What is the date of it in May, Judy?
The reorg for U-46 Board is April 14th, so that's your next meeting.
And then the staff appreciation is?
Uh, staff appreciation, uh, I think it's the week of the 12th. But I need to check on that, Aaron.
Yeah, we can arrange.
So, so the voting is on the, well, the annual meeting's on the 7th. Voting is on the 8th. And we should, I'm going to plan on trying to come down there about 8 o'clock for the voting results. At the Park Street, right? Right, okay.
So, April 14th, you'll be looking for the staff appreciation discussion. But Rob won't be ready for an S-BAC update then, right, Rob?
I, I couldn't commit to it tonight because we haven't set our dates yet.
We could do staff appreciation and interest behavior survey.
Wow.
One last thing that I have, and, and we previously discussed this, is, is this board has taken an interest in the, for lack of a better term, the sign-off of the handbook? How, how complete that is to, to the parents and/or students? You know, what's our tracking mechanism so that we understand that they, that our students and parents know what our policies are? There was a question a while ago in a executive session where this subject came up, and we need to understand this. We can, this particular topic is something that can be done in an open session. Anything else that we should be calendered for future board meetings? Right, then I'd like to move into executive session for the purpose of an employee matter at 9:20. RETN, thank you very much for your, this evening. We're going to go executive session and we'll look at it adjourned.
You do need a motion.
Oh, so do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to move into executive session.
Motion to, I'll second that motion, okay? So a motion by Ryan, second by Jack, to go to executive session. Okay? Thank you.